PM, roll call.
Councilman Russell. Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Baum.
Out.
Councilwoman Austin.
Here.
Councilman Wish.
Here.
All right, will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time I would entertain any amendments to tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the following amendments I'd like to have under item two presentations, the reading of resolutions 2018-21, 2018-22, and 2018-23. And our whole business, table item P.
Yeah.
Once again.
And just to clarify, you're going, your motion is to move M and N up to presentation but also add resolution 2018-23, which is not currently on the agenda, to presentations, correct?
That's correct.
All right, Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion is adopted four to zero. Up first under presentations is Veterans Committee. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, council members.
Welcome back.
We've got a few copies here. So on behalf of the Whitestown Veterans Committee, we have a proposal that we'd like to bring to the council, basically requesting a thousand dollar fund to use for the committee. And our first event would be on March 15th of this year, approved moving forward with a small event to honor the events of September 11th. Future planning for a larger event in 2019, we'd like to start in April. We've spoken about a parade possibly in 19 or 20. That's not something that's going to happen overnight, requires police, your approval, lots of other items there. The plan for 18 is to hold the 9/11 Remembrance Event at the municipal complex here on Saturday the 8th, or 9/8, from noon to 2 o'clock. It would include a projected video of the events that occurred on 9/11, a local guest speaker, an honor guard, award ceremony for local students. The award ceremony will be based on an essay contest with the theme "9/11 Remembered: What It Means To You." The Veterans Committee feels this contest will be especially impactful to keep the memory of 9/11 in the forefront. The students would be divided upon, divided up based upon their grade levels, grades 1 through 4, grades 5 through 8, grades 9 through 12, and so on. Each grade level winner will read their essays at the remembrance. The Veterans Committee is working to secure both military and first responders' static displays. And finally, the Veterans Committee would like to offer free hot dogs, chips, and such, much like the night out, National Night Out, that's done every year. We're currently working to find sponsors for food and prizes, but to ensure that this important event will still go on, the Veterans Committee, Veterans Committee is asking the town council for a thousand dollars to offset any needs that sponsors cannot cover. The possible breakdown would be $50 to $200 awards for the essay contests. We do have some interest in sponsoring that already. I can't speak of that at this time. Then, you know, money for incidentals and vendor food if we can acquire that. And it sure wouldn't hurt to have a little bit of a war chest for the Veterans Committee. With that said, we've also, I know you know or where the project we have going for the park, and we're still waiting to hear from the Eagle Scouts on what their progress is at this point in time. So that's where we're at with that. Any questions?
So would this be, would this event be held here at the municipal complex?
Correct, correct. Much, much like the National Night Out out here in front of the building, there's not, it's my understanding, there's not a market that weekend. So the day we would be out there, we planned originally on working with the market and doing it with the market and having it that way, but now that we've got the full parking lot available to us, I know Tanya's acquired the gymnasium for that day. So hopefully, if we can acquire enough static vehicles, National Guard with their little displays and such, and houses or whatever they have, maybe a smokehouse or a fire department or two, police, fire, ambulances, we could really do something large out here in the front. And to be honest with you, it shouldn't take a ton of planning, unlike our future plans with the parade and things like that. So with your help, we could probably make this pretty incredibly awesome.
I think this is really great.
Thank you.
And I like all the things you guys have, getting the government votes.
Yeah, I think, you know, these numbers are just numbers right now on the essays with prizes or such, awards, I guess you would call them. I've spoken with a couple people already also that have shown interest in doing plaques maybe for them, along with their cash awards, you know, something they could, they could put on their wall when they go to college and say, hey, you know, Whitestown helped me pay, Veterans Committee helped me pay for, you know, fried chicken this weekend or something, I don't know.
Fried chicken.
I really, I like the idea and I appreciate you guys working on this to bring something in front of us to get an event going.
Yeah, we're, we're really excited about it. Like I said, we're going to meet again this coming up month, hopefully with some approvals or some, some ideas from the council and so we can move forward with this and see what we can do bigger and better next year.
So Steve, what do we need to do to, for this?
There's two, two ways we could do this. What is just approving up to a thousand dollars, which actually DAX would be within DAX's spending authority, but for clarity's sake, we could just approve expenditure of up to a thousand dollars. If they want their own fund, we would need to create their own fund that would be, you guys would appropriate.
And that kind of brings another thing that I did mention, and I apologize, I didn't have it on the sheet. Like to get with the parks people and possibly sell maybe like glow bracelets and necklaces at the 4th of July event to help raise funds as well. So I'll, I'll get with the parks. I don't know if I need your approval on that or just speak with the parks and say run that function as well, to raise funds as well.
They're going to raise funds and then might be better if they create a fund.
So it sounds like we probably need to do the one motion tonight, just allow them to spend, be able to spend the money, and then maybe in the future.
I need to do an ordinance.
Create a fund, yeah.
So I guess I'll request an ordinance to get us a fund set up.
Yeah, but in the interim, I would make a motion that we authorize a $1,000 expenditure to the Veterans Committee for this 9/11 event.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted.
Thank you.
And we'll be back, we'll bring in ordinance.
And I'll be back next month.
Next month.
All right.
To create the fund. All right, up next, Boone, EDC. Good evening.
Good evening, Molly Whitehead, Boone County Economic Development Corporation. Want to thank you all tonight for allowing me the opportunity to address you. Our plan going forward is to, of course, be here on an as-needed project, or as-needed basis for projects and things of the like, but wanted to provide a more formal update on a quarterly basis as well. So certainly, you know, we appreciate your partnership and continued support of our organization. It's how we can continue doing the things that we do. So a very brief update for you on lead activity and other projects we've been working on, on your behalf. So far, as of mid-March, I should say, we've received 42 leads. I would suggest that probably in the past week or so, we're probably up to 45, 46 leads, if not more than that. To give you perspective, by the end of March of last year, we were at 37 leads. So we have definitely seen an uptick in companies that have come knocking on our door. A lot more of these companies have been manufacturing-type companies, office users, headquarters. So we've seen a different type than, than we've typically seen. Most of those companies continue to look for existing space. And so that is one advantage that you all have, is that you have some of the existing space in Boone County, whereas we don't have that everywhere else. And certainly with some of the project and, or the project, projects before you tonight, some of those buildings are divisible, can accommodate some smaller spaces. We have seen a slight shift in that as well, and we still see a decent number of companies that want under 50,000 square feet. One of the buildings for your consideration tonight can be subdivided down into that range. But we've also seen an equal number of requests for 100,000 to 200,000 square foot facilities, which again, you have down here, so that is a benefit to us to be able to submit for those leads. And certainly, continued strong interest in Whitestown geography, the number of people who live here, the type of people and workers who live here, that's all of great benefit to us. Other projects that we've been working on, we've really started to focus on quality-of-life projects. Megan Swain joined our office back in August and has identified a couple of initial projects that we hope to kick off yet this spring. And we've already identified spaces in Whitestown where we think these would be good fits. We're working with DAX and other staff on these projects, don't have any official announcements to make yet, but, but know that that's been a focus area for us, particularly in the legacy core. And then in addition to that, we've also applied for several different marketing grants for restaurant attraction campaigns. We believe that there's a lot of great potential, especially in the legacy core area. But throughout Boone County, we know that having amenities like that are greatly desired. That helps bring people to live here, and in turn, that provides us the information, the data we need to show site selectors and brokers and companies that we have the workforce that they need. With that, I hope you have you to answer any questions, address any concerns that you may have.
Any questions?
I just want to thank Molly and her staff. You guys are here every month, giving us great information. I know that you were at the RDC meeting last night, so it's much appreciated how you're, you're here, you're involved, and you're active in our meetings, and you're a true partner to what we're doing here in Whitestown. So thank you to you and your crew.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, next we have resolution 2018-21.
As we all know, this has been a particularly trying month here in Boone County. So I'm honored to be able to introduce resolution number 2018-21, a resolution honoring the life of Boone County Deputy Sheriff Jacob M. Pickett. Whereas Boone County Deputy Sheriff Jake M. Pickett lost his life in the line of duty on March 2nd, 2018, in Lebanon, Indiana. And whereas Deputy Pickett was a graduate of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Training Academy and the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. And whereas Deputy Pickett protected our community as a member of the Boone County Sheriff's Department and previously worked for the Marion and Tipton County Sheriff's Departments. And whereas Deputy Pickett also served as a taser instructor, K-9 team leader, and a member of the Fraternal Order of Police Number 110. And whereas the life of Deputy Pickett was dedicated to public service in our community as he greeted children at school in uniform, organized Christmas card drives for children, educated children during the Whitestown National Night Out and at our local schools, and rescued animals with his wife when off duty. And whereas, as a beloved husband and caring father, Deputy Pickett is survived by his wife Jennifer and his two sons Wade Matthew and Lincoln David, and many extended family members and friends. And whereas Deputy Pickett was much loved and respected by his family, friends, and colleagues, and his true legacy lies in the profound effect he had on countless members of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, one, the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana recognizes the significant contributions of Deputy Jacob M. Pickett over the course of his distinguished service to the Boone County community and celebrates his legacy of servanthood. The council members extend our sincerest condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues. Two, that the clerk treasurer transmit a copy of this resolution to the family of Deputy Pickett, passed and adopted this day by the Whitestown, Indiana Town Council. Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt resolution 2018-21.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted four to zero.
Likewise, as it's been difficult on the Pickett family, it's also been difficult on our Sheriff's Department. So I'm going to introduce resolution number 2018-22, a resolution expressing condolences to the Boone County Sheriff's Office for the sacrifice of Jacob M. Pickett. Whereas the Boone County Deputy Sheriff Jacob M. Pickett lost his life in the line of duty on March 2nd, 2018, in Lebanon, Indiana. And whereas Deputy Pickett was a graduate of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Training Academy and the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. And whereas Deputy Pickett protected our community as a member of the Boone County Sheriff's Department, previously worked for the Marion and Tipton County Sheriff's Departments. And whereas Deputy Pickett also served as a taser instructor, K-9 team, team leader, and a member of the Fraternal Order of Police Number 110. And whereas the life of Deputy Pickett was dedicated to public service in our community as he greeted children at school in uniform, organized Christmas card drives for children, educated children during the national, Whitestown National Night Out and at our local schools, and rescued animals with his wife when off duty. And whereas, as his beloved husband and caring father, Deputy Pickett is survived by his wife Jennifer and his two sons Wade Matthew and Lincoln David, and many extended family members and friends. Whereas Deputy Pickett was much loved and respected by his family, friends, and colleagues, his true legacy lies in the profound effect he had on countless members of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, one, the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana recognizes the significant contributions of Deputy Jacob M. Pickett over the course of his distinguished service to the Boone County community and celebrates his legacy of servanthood. The council members extend our sincerest condolences to the Boone County Sheriff's Department. That the clerk treasurer transmit a copy of this resolution to the Boone County Sheriff, passed and adopted by the Whitestown, Indiana Town Council. Mr. President, I make the motion, we adopt resolution number 2018-22.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted four to zero. I, I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Austin for, for putting these in front of us because, I know, I didn't know Jake Pickett personally, but he certainly had the heart of a true public servant and, and our condolences are with the Boone County Sheriff's Office and, and his children and family and wife as they're going through this hard time. He clearly made quite a, quite an impact on the community in his, in his life, so he'll be missed.
Absolutely.
Next is resolution 2018-23.
Resolution number 2018-23, a resolution declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Whitestown, Indiana. Whereas children are vital to our community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets. And whereas April is Child, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas suspected abuse and neglect of children is the moral responsibility of every citizen to report.
And whereas the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana actively promotes a proactive response to the problem of child abuse and neglect by supporting the efforts of organizations such as Prevent Child Abuse America, to prevent child maltreatment in all its forms. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by informing families about community resources and services available that could help prevent a family crisis or help overcome one. And whereas finding solutions to prevent child abuse and neglect is furthered by involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources to cope with stress and nurture children, help provide opportunities for children to grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies are better positioned to succeed with the assistance of partnerships created among citizens, human resource service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas the Town Council desires to make a positive impact on the future by addressing child abuse and neglect. Whereas the Town Council respectfully requests that the, that Whitestown, through the Town Manager and all of their departments, actively promote Child Abuse Prevention Month in Whitestown. And whereas Prevent Child Abuse America estimates that child abuse and neglect affects 1 million American children each year and costs our nation 220 million every day through investigations, foster care, medical and mental health treatment, special education, juvenile and adult crime, chronic health problems, and other costs across the lifespan. And whereas Whitestown owes a debt of gratitude to concerned citizens and organizations that provide families with services to ensure the physical and emotional well-being of our children. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Town Council does hereby declare and proclaim April 6th as Wear Blue Day in April 2018, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Whitestown, Indiana. Section two, the Town, through the Town Manager and all of its departments, is hereby charged with the responsibility of actively promoting Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town in order to make a positive impact on the future through the prevention of child abuse and neglect. Section three, the Town Council urges all citizens to take the opportunity to renew their commitment to protecting the children of Boone County, for in doing so, we will enhance the quality of life, not only for children at risk, but for the entire citizenry as well. Section four, the Town, through the Town Manager, is hereby charged with arranging the planting of a pinwheel garden at the Whitestown Municipal Complex in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, passed and adopted by the Whitestown, Indiana Town Council this day. Mr. President, I make the motion, we adopt resolution number 2018-23.
Second.
We've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted four to zero.
And Mr. President, thank you for bringing this to the forefront for us to take action on and remind the community that it's so important. Not only does it have an impact, it ripples throughout the rest of their lives.
Absolutely, and I mean, there's, there's nothing more important that we can do than help to try to prevent child abuse and neglect, so. Next is the clerk treasurer report. Any questions? Department reports? Any questions or comments on department reports?
None.
Okay, we'll move on to the public request to speak section of the agenda. Has anyone signed up to speak tonight? No one? All right, next we will move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which includes item A, approval of meeting minutes from February 14th, 2018, meeting minutes. Claims, which include February 2018 expenses, town, February 2018 revenues, town, February 18 utility claims, which includes water operating and wastewater operating. Consider the approval of an additional $37,000 for land acquisition from Travel Authority for the Indianapolis Road-Whitestown Parkway Intersection Improvement Project. D, consider acceptance of the Mourning Dev property deed. E, consider approval of a settlement agreement between Citizens Water Authority and Whitestown Municipal Utilities.
Mr. President, I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted four to zero. Next, we will move on to unfinished business. And first we have ordinance 2018-06, which creates a substance abuse prevention commission.
Ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, creating a substance abuse prevention commission. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance 2018-06.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted four to zero. All right, at this time, we're going to have a public hearing on ordinance 2018-07, which is an ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana approving matters related to lease financing of the South Main Street Park Project. And is there anyone who would like to speak as part of the public hearing this evening on ordinance 2018-07?
Mr. President, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, public hearing is closed four to zero. And now we'll move on to the second read of ordinance 2018-07.
Ordinance 2018-07, an ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana approving matters related to lease financing of the South Main Street Park Project. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance number 2018-07.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
I want to take a moment and please, Mr. President, and express my appreciation for how hard DAX and Nathan Messer have worked to bring this to fruition. And it's really a phenomenal project, and I cannot wait to see the benefits that it brings to the residents of the town. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you both, and the ordinance was adopted four to zero. Up next, we have the second read of ordinance 2018-08, which is an ordinance amending the Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to PTO days and flex time.
Ordinance 2017-08, an ordinance amending the Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to PTO days, telecommuting, and flex time. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance number 2018-08.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted four to zero. Up next, we have resolution 2018-07, and this is regarding the policy and fees for renting the town facilities.
Resolution 2018-07, a resolution adopting an amended policy concerning town facility rental. Mr. President, I move the adoption of resolution number 2018-07.
Do I have a second?
Well, I'm curious, are you concerned about something?
I would. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Abstain.
Motion is adopted three to zero.
I just want to take a moment, Mr. President, to thank Nathan and Councilman Russell. I know he's not here tonight, but they put in some, some good work and effort, and Jason too, sitting down and going through this and creating this amended policy. So glad to see the product come forward and be something that we can support as a group.
All right, moving on next to new business. Up first, we have a public hearing on resolution, or ordinance 2018-09, and this is an ordinance approving an additional appropriation of $500 to the Human Relations Commission Fund from the Human Relations Commission Donation Fund. And at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the ordinance?
Mr. President, I make the motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say no. Public hearing is closed with the vote of four to zero. Next, we have Letter B, Ordinance twenty-eighteen dash zero-nine.
Additional appropriation ordinance, number twenty-eighteen dash zero-nine, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one, be it resolved by the Council of Whitestown, Civil Town, Boone County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name, Human Relations Grant. Other services and charges, Human Relations operating expenditures, five-hundred-and-eighty thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Total for Human Relations Grant, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution twenty-eighteen dash, second, two days?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero-nine.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended, four to zero.
Additional appropriation orders, number twenty-eighteen dash zero-nine, Mr. President, I move the adoption of additional appropriation orders, number twenty-eighteen dash zero-nine.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, four to zero. All right, up next, we have Ordinance twenty-eighteen dash ten, an ordinance establishing a map of expanded historic district.
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten, an ordinance establishing a map of expanded historic district, whereas the Town of Whitestown, in accordance with Indiana Code Chapter thirty-six dash seven dash eleven, created the Historic Preservation Commission for the research, protection, maintenance, restoration, rehabilitation, reconstruction, or development of historic districts. Whereas the Town has previously established a historic district for the Town of Whitestown, which already includes property located at three forty-five South Bowers Street. Whereas in accordance with Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash eleven dash six, the Commission conducted a survey and created a map of an expanded historic district within the town, a copy of which is attached. Whereas in accordance with Indiana Code dash thirty-six dash seven dash eleven dash seven, the Commission has submitted the map to the Whitestown Town Council for consideration. And whereas the Whitestown Town Council has reviewed the map and finds that it identifies historic buildings, structures, and sites within the expanded district. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, section one, the map presented by the Commission designating an expanded historic district in the town, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A, is hereby approved and adopted. Section two, Clerk Treasurer is hereby directed to record the revised district map in the Office of Boone County Recorder, recommended for approval. First read.
Were we wanting to do a second, just first read tonight? All right, up next we have Letter D, and Letter D is a public hearing, uh, regarding Resolution twenty-eighteen dash twelve, uh, which is a confirmatory resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area, uh, Park one-thirty. This is included in the commitments of, um, the Green Park MOU, which is now named Park, Park one-thirty, that was passed and executed by the RDC and the Town Council in two thousand seventeen. Is there anyone, uh, from the public who would like to speak in regards to Resolution twenty-eighteen dash twelve? All right.
Mr. President, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Public hearing is closed, four to zero. And next we have Letter E, Resolution twenty-eighteen dash twelve.
Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash twelve, a confirmatory resolution of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, for the designation of an economic revitalization area. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash twelve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, four to zero. All right, up next we have Resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirteen.
Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving real property tax deductions in Green Park Economic Revitalization Area under Indiana Code six dash one-point-one dash twelve-point-one, Park one-thirty slash Green Park. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash thirteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, four to zero. Up next, we have Resolution twenty-eighteen dash fourteen.
Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash fourteen, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving real property tax deductions in Whitestown ERA number two, under Indiana Code six dash one-point-one dash twelve-point-one, Browning slash Duke LLC, Building Two. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash fourteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, four to zero. Up next, we have Resolution twenty-eighteen dash fifteen.
Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash fifteen, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving real property tax deductions in Whitestown ERA number two, under Indiana Code six dash one-point-one dash twelve-point-one, Browning slash Duke LLC, Building Number Four. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash fifteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been second, seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, four to zero. Up next, we have Resolution twenty-eighteen dash sixteen.